From Beverly, and that's how we know we can start. Good morning, and welcome to the November 13th meeting of the New North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority Board of Trustees. As a reminder to all members, the microphones around the board table are very sensitive, and this meeting is being recorded and webcast. Now, to start the meeting, I'll ask Beverly Morris to read the Open Public Meetings Act notice. Beverly?
This is to advise that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 BL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been forwarded to the Newark Star-Ledger, Yasbury Park Press, Purion News, The Daily Record, The Home News Tribune, and The Jersey Journal, and the New Jersey Herald. It was posted in the Essex County Hall of Records in Newark.
Thank you, Beverly. Please join me in honoring our flag. By pleasure, allegiance.
There's a flag. United States of America, liberty, public, which is one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen?
Present.
Essex?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Hunterdon?
Here.
Jersey City?
Here.
Middlesex?
Here.
Monmouth? Morris?
Here.
Newark? Ocean?
Here.
Passaic?
Here.
Somerset?
Present.
Sussex?
Here.
Union?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Governor's Office? NJDOT?
Present.
NJ Transit?
Present.
Port Authority?
Here.
Citizens Representative? Hey, Mr. Chairman, we have 16 voting members present and a quorum.
Thank you very much, Beverly. Next is approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the September 12th board meeting? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
No moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
One moment, please. Who moved?
Motion and union. Motion moved, union seconded.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Any abstentions? Okay. I'd like to take this opportunity now to present my report. Once again, thank you all for coming to this morning's meeting. Before I give my report, I wanted to welcome Eric Powers, Assistant Commissioner of Statewide Planning, Safety, and Investment as the new board alternate for the New Jersey Department of Transportation. I also want to welcome our speaker, Natalie Augusto-Fillion, the Deputy Climate Resilience Officer at the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. Natalie will be presenting on the department's resiliency work. A few weeks ago, I had the pleasure of joining Commissioner Kenny at the ribbon cutting for the new South Amboy Ferry Service. This effort was 30 years in the making. You may recall that this board awarded a $1 million transportation alternatives grant to South Amboy in 2021 to construct a multi-use trail connecting the nearby transit station to the new ferry terminal, which is under construction. The project includes bike lanes, intersection improvements, paved path, and security cameras. This new ferry service creates redundancy and connectivity. As Assembly Speaker Coughlin noted at the event, if you miss your train, you can catch a ferry, and vice versa. Last month, I also participated in a news conference with Congressman Pascal and Passaic Mayor Hector Laura on the $15 million investment in the Passaic Bus Terminal Project, which this board approved as part of the August redistribution funding. This project will allow Passaic County and the city of Passaic to move forward with recommendations from the Main Avenue Local Concept Development Study, which will make this critical corridor a safer place for people walking, biking, driving, and riding transit. As you may recall, in his remarks at our July board meeting in Patterson, Mayor Laura noted that the city of Passaic hasn't had a roadway fatality in two years. It's a great achievement, thanks in part to some of the federally funded improvements that are happening there. Speaking of safety, today, the board will consider adopting roadway safety performance measure targets that are specific to our region. The NJTPA is committed to reaching zero roadway deaths by 2050, but we know we have our work cut out for us. As we heard from central staff at the joint committee meeting, we're making progress in some areas, but still have work to do in others. It's very concerning that our region is seeing increases in the number of injuries and fatalities among our most vulnerable road users, pedestrians and cyclists. While the challenge is real, these benchmarks, along with a wide range of programs and projects developed in cooperation with the subregions and our many partners, will help us reach our goal of zero fatalities. A key component of this will be creating local safety action plans for each county in our region. Eight counties, including Passaic, are working with the NJTPA to develop a plan. Middlesex County already has one in place, and four subregions previously received federal Safe Streets for All funding to develop these plans. Several municipalities have also received grants to develop their own plans. Patterson and Dunellen were both awarded funding earlier this year, and just a few weeks ago, we learned Red Bank, Edison, Englewood, and Maua were awarded funding in the latest round of grants. As part of this effort, the NJTPA and the Federal Highway Administration hosted a three-part webinar series to share information on developing these plans. You can find the presentations on the NJTPA website if you missed them. The series will conclude with an in-person workshop here on November 30th for subregional and partner agency staff. These local safety action plans will identify safety needs and help develop strategies for addressing them to make our roads safer in order to prevent serious injuries and deaths. Once subregions have safety plans in place, they will be eligible for additional federal funding to implement the plan's recommendations. There are many other NJTPA programs that are helping improve safety, including infrastructure improvements through the Local Safety and High-Risk Rural Roads Program, road safety audits, and municipal planning efforts through the Complete Streets Technical Assistance Program. The NJTPA will be accepting applications for the next round of Complete Streets Technical Assistance beginning December 5th. Staff also continues to work with communities and organizations throughout the state on Streets Smart New Jersey, a public outreach campaign that aims to change the behaviors that contribute to pedestrian vehicle crashes. Later this month, Easy Ride Transportation Management Association is kicking off a campaign in partnership with Union County, the city of Elizabeth, Union Township, and the NJTPA that will promote safety along a county road through the two municipalities. Before wrapping up, I wanted to also remind everyone that the NJTPA board will elect new officers for two-year terms at our January meeting. Bergen County Executive Jim Tedesco and Monmouth County Commissioner Director Tom Arneun have agreed to serve on the nominating committee with me. Over the next few weeks, the committee will meet to determine a slate of candidates for the executive committee positions. The nominations will be announced at the January meeting, followed by a call for any additional nominations before a vote is taken. If anyone is interested in making a nomination or in being nominated, please reach out to me or to David. And that concludes my report. Any remarks from NJDOT this morning?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a note that we do not yet have an approved STIP. We hope to have something further to report by the end of the month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any remarks from New Jersey Transit this morning?
Thank you, Chairman. Just real briefly, about a week ago, FRA announced about $16 billion or $17 billion in federal-state partnership grants, a number of those billions coming to New Jersey and certainly to the regions. Appreciate all the work that's been done.
Excellent. Thank you, Chairman. David, why don't you give us your executive directors?
All right, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for being here. I'd like to start by sharing two good news items. First is that the Federal Environmental Protection Agency has approved our air quality conformity determination for the recently adopted Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, and that speaks to what Andy was just mentioning, that that hopefully will lead to fairly soon official full approval of the TIP, and we'll be able to start with that. Secondly, I wanted to congratulate the Port Authority for receiving a $32 million grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation's Maritime Administration to reconstruct a berth at Port Newark. This will increase the port's capacity to handle projected cargo increases and to improve resiliency to flooding. Turning to activities by central staff here at NJTPA, we've been busy working with the subregions and our partner agencies to get a number of projects underway since the board last met in September. The chair mentioned our local safety action plan efforts. We're finalizing consultant selection and should be getting work underway with the subregions very soon. Central staff also attended and shared their knowledge and expertise at several recent safety-related events. That includes the Safety Action Plan webinars that the chair mentioned, as well as the State Strategic Highway Safety Plan Summit last month, and the Complete Streets Summit was held on November 1st. Moving beyond just our safety activities, our support for priority local capital projects is progressing. Four local concept development studies are now underway. They'll explore different options to identify preliminary preferred alternatives and ultimately provide the environmental documentation needed so that those projects can advance into the TIP. Those four studies are the Route 3 Corridor in Manalapan Township in Monmouth County, Easton Avenue Corridor in Franklin Township in Somerset County, Kennedy Boulevard and County Line Road in Lakewood Township in Ocean County, and Lenape Island Road Bridge in Denville in Morris County. Websites are under development for all these projects, and meetings with local officials and stakeholders have already begun, followed by more extensive community outreach and public meetings. For those of you with studies in your subregions, I encourage you to get involved and to help us engage the public and get the word out about this work. Speaking of involvement of trustees in NJTPA-related work, on October 23rd, I had the opportunity to join Middlesex County Commissioner Kenny and the State Transportation Commissioner at a news conference about the Southern Middlesex County Freight Movement Study. That was completed through our Subregional Studies Program in June, and it's a very good example of how federal funding can be used to plan improvements at the local level that will make travel safer while also supporting the region's economy. The study identified short- and long-term recommendations for addressing truck traffic serving the many warehouses in that area. County, affected municipalities have already begun working in cooperation with local facility operators to reexamine designated truck routes and signage, make sure that wayfinding applications don't direct trucks to residential streets. NJDOT is lending support to these efforts and looking at truck-related improvements along State Route 130. And I think that this study, it really employed some best practices that should always be considered on these studies going forward and in other subregions and in the future. It includes very reasonable and very actionable and specific recommendations. There was involvement of a wide range of officials, county, state, local, and the private sector. And the county also did an excellent job publicizing the study's findings. It's always very encouraging when one of these studies quickly leads to the next steps towards implementation. As far as these subregional studies go, central staff works with the subregions throughout, but always keep the NJTPA and our staff in mind when those studies are done as well, because we can help publicize the findings and help work on potential avenues for implementation. And right now, there are several subregional studies that are currently underway. Jersey City has kicked off its Traffic Calming Toolkit study. There was a public demonstration project to introduce traffic calming strategies and get feedback from the public. Earlier this month, Passaic County held a public meeting for its infrastructure investment study, and Monmouth County is holding a public meeting in Yasbury Park this Thursday for its study called Monmouth Paths Access for All, which is looking at various barriers to mobility in the county. The city of Newark will be creating a bike plan, and Warren County recently issued a request for proposals for consultants to develop its comprehensive Complete Streets Policy Implementation Plan. Other studies will be proposed as part of the upcoming Unified Planning Work Program for fiscal year 2025, which begins in July. That work program is under development, guides the work of planning work of central staff, the subregions, the transportation management associations, and the draft will be distributed to our partners next month. And keep in mind, the development of the work program is an annual opportunity for us to set the priorities for the day-to-day work that we do, identify what we want to achieve in keeping with the vision and goals of our long-range plan. So when you see the draft, please give us feedback, give us your ideas. The deadline for that is January 12th. Then the schedule is that the document will go to the committees for review and endorsement in February, and to this board in March. There are a variety of new tasks proposed for the coming year, and many that build on or grow existing activities. Of note, we will be beginning the update of our long-range plan, which will need to be adopted by the board in the fall of 2025. And this year, we're laying the groundwork by retaining consultants to help with the financial element of the plan, and of course, the very, very important public engagement component of our work. So you'll be hearing much more about these efforts in the months to come. Also reflected in the new work program will be a continuing commitment, planning for active transportation, including improving the regional walk and bike network in keeping with the recommendations of the Active Transportation Plan that we've finalized this year. Walking and biking have clearly become a greater priority for many communities who are seeking to provide residents with alternatives to driving and recreational opportunities and better access to transit. On a note related to active transportation, we continue to support the development of the Morris Canal Greenway with the ultimate goal of creating a 111-mile route across six counties. Last week, we hosted a meeting of the Morris Canal Working Group, and that included an update on numerous greenway projects underway, including several that were supported by federal grants made possible by this board and this organization. Also, as I mentioned at the joint committee meeting last month, we continue to work with the New York Metropolitan Transportation Council on the study for a multi-use path linking the George Washington Bridge to the Mario M. Cuomo Bridge, formerly known as the Tappan Zee. Couple final notes. There's a solicitation for Complete Streets Technical Assistance, which is going to start December 5th with a webinar for interested applicants. The details for that are on our website. And finally, I just want to note that the NJTPA will have a booth at the League of Municipalities Convention this week, starting tomorrow. Please stop by if you are attending, or encourage others from your organization or your jurisdiction to stop by. We're looking in particular to talk to municipal officials about the programs that we have and the opportunities we have for them to get involved in transportation planning, and any help that you can give us to get the word out about that is greatly appreciated. Chairman, that completes my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, David. Now we'll hear from our speaker, Natalie Augusto-Fillion, who works out of the Office of Climate Resilience at DEP. In this capacity, she works with a team to accelerate the implementation of statewide resilience policy and programs developed by the Interagency Council on Climate Resilience. Prior to joining DEP last October, she served as the Chief Sustainability Officer for the city of Newark, Resiliency Manager with Sustainable New Jersey, and Program Officer with the Institute for Sustainable Communities. Throughout her career, she has helped to develop, design, and deliver national and regional capacity-building programs for local government and community-based climate and sustainability practitioners. She has a bachelor's and master's degrees in natural resources from the University of Vermont. Natalie?
Thank you so much for having me. Good morning, everyone. My name is Natalie Augusto-Fillion, and this morning, I've got about 15 minutes of presentations for you that'll run through the activities of the Office of Resilience. And so, just to kind of set the stage here, I do want to recognize that all of our work dictated by state policy, which was adopted in 2019 or passed in 2019 exactly. And I'll get into that a little bit, not too far away. Morris, does this sound better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. So I'll just start by saying that my hope here is to walk folks through a very brief overview of climate resilience work that's led out of the Office of Climate Resilience, and we'll come back to this, but I started with it to give you a sense that I'm starting at the state level, sort of looping around to regional work that's captured in our resilient NJ program, and then ending with just a little bit about Blue Acres and some of our community outreach efforts around risk management. So I want to lead with the punchline. You know, there's a lot of us here that are very busy, have very limited time, and so basically, my hope is that you walk away with a sense that this is an invitation to be engaged on this topic with DEP's Office of Climate Resilience, particularly recognizing that there's a summit coming up in a couple months, and obviously, we'll be down at the League as well. So if you want to stop by the DEP's booth and chat with anyone about any of the programs that I've mentioned, it's an open invitation to sort of be part of that. I'm sure my email address is in the slide somewhere, but we have a general inbox that we all track, climateresilience@depp nj.com. So sometimes I find that it's helpful, particularly with a crowd like this that's been working in this space in New Jersey for a number of years and sort of understands the context, to sort of start with where we've come from and what that means for what we're doing. New Jersey's obviously been doing coastal management work, waterfront development work, for protection-type work for... Hurricane Sandy is really the moment in our history as a state where we started to be much more intentional about talking about climate impacts and what that means, not only because of our own local experience here, but because of increasing mandates at the federal level to be able to address this work. And what you'll see is that DEP started with the allocation that we get annually federally from NOAA, from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, and basically adopted that to create much more opportunities for local work, particularly in the 239 municipalities that are within our coastal untidely influenced zone, but expanding that over the years. And so when you see the 2019 executive order come out that mandated the creation of my boss's position, Nick Angaron, as the Chief Resilience Officer, and sort of established the framework for statewide policy, this is all building on the success of previous interventions in the coastal zone. And today, New Jersey is among the leaders in the across New Jersey's, excuse me, the United States for effective planning efforts. So Executive Order 89 was signed by Governor Murphy in 2019, and it established a policy that the executive branch will take proactive efforts to build resilience, and created this mandate essentially for the first time. So I'll just read this verbatim, because I think it's important to name it. "For the first time, the governor made clear that it was the policy of the state of New Jersey that executive branch departments and agencies take proactive and coordinated efforts to protect public health and safety, and to promote and protect the physical, economic, and social vitality and resilience in New Jersey's communities, current and anticipated impacts of climate change." It's a mouthful, but it really sets sort of, in a lot of ways, 2012 and Sandy and a lot of the disasters that happened in the early aughts, and then all of the sort of planning work, we're about 10 years into very intentional focus on what climate change means in New Jersey. Actually, just read this verbatim, it'll be in the slide deck that folks will receive after the fact. One of the important pieces was the creation of an interagency council. Sorry, I skipped too far ahead. I already mentioned that, you know, one piece of Executive Order 89 was the establishment of Chief Resilience Officer to sort of lead development of a strategy and work across the executive branch to advance that. And then, the Interagency Council on Climate Resilience, which is one of my sort of main functions, is helping to staff and facilitate this work, is established to help to coordinate and advance that work, implement the statewide resilience strategy. We started at 17 agencies, we're at 22 now. And I think, again, because it's a crowd of folks that has been working in this space in some time, the names of the entities have changed over the years, the Office of Climate Resilience and the Chief Resilience Officer. There was a previous sort of nomenclature, the Climate and Flood Resilience Program, so just sort of clarifying for folks. But we were mandated to develop a scientific report, which sort of serves as the science underpinning this work. And we created that, it was released in June of 2020. So if folks are thinking through timeline here, right, just as the world is sort of the world, and we are all finding our feet relative to the global pandemic, the department is doing all of this science and research that leads into the creation of a strategy. And so there are a number of reasons that we're really intentional about sort of being out in community, explaining what this strategy entails, what the work of New Jersey state executive branches are relative to this work, because there's this moment in time where we all were sort of focused elsewhere, in terms of our families, our towns, our communities. Since the 2020 report, there've been a number of additional scientific findings and reports and studies, et cetera. Just going to call quick attention to the one where we worked in cooperation with the Northeast Regional Climate Center to update our understanding of historic precipitation, as well as do much more intentional projections of precipitation numbers based on the updated observation record. And then in partnership with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Health, DEP's Division of Science and Research created this addendum to the scientific report focused on human health and community. The Human Health and Communities addendum, which is about a year old now, really drives down into how extreme weather, diminished air quality, infectious disease, all of these result in really specific community impacts. So if you do spend some time diving here, you'll get into the details on kinds of, you know, whether it's respiratory illness or kidney disease, or cardiovascular impacts of the different things in climate change. So for folks that are really looking to get into the weeds there. And I won't belabor this, because I think a lot of these scientific findings are things that folks are familiar with. But prior to Executive Order 89, DEP asked Rutgers University with establishing a scientific and technical advisory panel. These are experts from throughout New Jersey, and a lot of them are really global experts in this space, to provide us the sort of most likely findings with regards to global emission scenario. So they took a moderate emission scenario and adapted that based on the very localized information to New Jersey. And this table gives you not only a sense of the range for planning, but it gives you a sense for why you are probably regularly hearing 1 foot, 3 foot, 5 foot, right? You're hearing messaging from DEP about sea level rise, we're often talking about it in those chunks because of the findings from the staff, the scientific and technical advisory panel. There's a tool online called NJ Flood Mapper that you can use to zoom into your community and to see what 1 foot, 2 foot, 3 foot looks like. And I'm sharing this one, I think, because often, and I think a lot of people who, you know, spend time in the shore area, understand that the source of the flooding, from a sea level rise perspective, can often be sort of bay side of the community, because historically, our dunes are actually the highest elevation point in some of our community. Now, with respect to precipitation, so there's sort of the tri-effect of issues that are facing New Jersey, sea level rise, increases in precipitation, and increases in heat. Very light touch on all of these. With respect to precipitation, we were using a flood model that looked at data about precipitation up until the year 2020. Now, or, excuse me, up until the year 2000. Now, in the two decades from 2000 to 2020, there were quite a lot of really heavy storms that we all experienced. And so this study that I mentioned in partnership with Northeast Climate, Regional Climate Center in Cornell, was really looking to take those two decades of information and bring it into our planning landscape. So we find that the frequency of extreme precipitation events and the intensity of extreme precipitation events is considerably higher than we previously anticipated. And this, there's a URL at the end here that also, you know, allows you to sort of fiddle with the various numbers for local... And lastly, extreme heat. A very simplified graphic that takes 125 years of observed temperature data in New Jersey, very clear trend towards warming. As you can tell here, the blue-tone bars are cooler than average years, and the red-tone bars are warmer than average years. The 10 hottest summers in New Jersey have taken place since 1999. Nine of the hottest have occurred since 2005. There's quite a lot of data available about climate science, and just in the lead-up to Climate Week this, so last month, basically, maybe six weeks ago, we released a new web resource that makes this information, instead of a 400, 500-page report, and addendums and appendices, it sort of breaks down the information in different chunks that are of interest to, whether it be educators that are implementing New Jersey's new climate change curriculum in schools, or whether it be folks like yourself. So the scientific report is the underpinning for our strategy, and that strategy is basically focused on promoting the long-term resilience of all of New Jersey's economy, the communities, natural resources, our infrastructure, all of that, it's sort of captured in the strategy. The strategy defined what we mean by resilience, which is not just bouncing back, the sort of a pre-storm condition, which is often what our communities are looking to do, but also bouncing forward and thinking strategically about what needs to happen next. The strategy is divided into six priority areas, all of which you can sort of see the titles of here, you can look at it in more detail at the URL provided. I've also provided folks a stack, the Board of Trustees members received a stack that includes a summary of the strategy, the strategy at a glance, in case you want to review that. The sort of lesser-quality paper copy of the scientific report is, because we're not really doing paper copies of this as much, given that we have that new web resource out, but you have that there as well. Now, this strategy was released in October of 2019, so we're a couple years out. We recently, just a couple weeks ago, put out an accomplishments report that just sort of looks at some of... sort of looks at some of the successes that we've seen in the last couple of years from state agency action, so welcome folks to take a look at that as well. And the kinds of actions really get at that broad-based definition of resilience we're talking about. So we'll see examples of expanding technical assistance provisions, even a modifying of a financial risk disclosure that's being used by insurance agencies, promoting and incentivizing resilience through the financial decisions that state agencies are making, coordinating to develop a wetlands program plan that looks at natural resources issues, just a huge sort of swath of the ways in which we're approaching resilience work. And what comes next for us, let me do a quick time. What comes next for us is the development of resilience action plans. So we take this strategy, this policy framework forms the foundation for the work, and turn it into implementable activities. We decided to focus on extreme heat for the first resilience action plan, and that's expected to be released in the spring of 2024. And this is basically a deep dive into the topic of extreme heat. It was really critical for us to start with extreme heat, because it didn't get as much sort of treatment when we passed the strategy in October of 2019, and because frankly, extreme heat is one of the deadliest climate hazards we're facing today. If you sort of take and combine all sorts of extreme weather events, extreme heat kills more than the next two, three. And in New Jersey, we're particularly vulnerable to extreme heat. We are warming faster than the region, we're warming faster than the globe. The observed temperature records for New Jersey is that in the last 125 years, whereas the globe has warmed by one and a half degrees Fahrenheit, we've warmed by three and a half degrees Fahrenheit. So you see that it's, you know, there's topographical reasons that this map shows up the way it does in terms of trying to downscale that climate data, but New Jersey has certainly an exposure rate that's higher than other parts of the region, the country, the globe. when we're talking about, you know, excessive heat and what it means in our communities, we're talking about heat as a threat multiplier. Heat is an issue that's already affecting our overburdened communities even more so. And heat affects everything, absolutely everything that we're talking about, whether it's water supply, whether it's food supply, whether it's infrastructure. And when we did sort of a scan of available plans at the state level, New Jersey is third in line of having, you know, this kind of comprehensive planning framework, New York and California already have documents that are public. The buckets of activities basically fit in one of these, work to protect vulnerable populations, work to ensure that our built environment sort of is able to withstand the issues, and work to ensure that our natural systems are functioning and able to help to provide resilience benefits. And one thing that I like about this slide is that if you take the list of outcomes that we're driving towards, this is true regardless of what sort of hazard of concern. We are looking to ensure that there's an increased sense of education and awareness about a given issue, we want to make sure that we can zoom in to the areas where we experience vulnerability, whether that's infrastructure assets, or whether that's vulnerable populations, and retrofit accordingly, improve the way we coordinate across state agencies and across levels of government, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Again, because we're doing this work as we write these plans, there's a summary document that shares a little bit about what actions are already underway. We'll have the plan in the spring, but this is available online now to sort of point at some of the work that's already. And I tried my best to not hit you all with a bunch of data and tools, because there's so many about, out there that they're kind of overwhelming. I will say that when it comes to heat, it's often a topic that folks aren't reading as much, that folks aren't sort of dealing with as much. So I wanted to point out that there are a few tools that are available now, if you do want to take the time to sort of zoom into your county, to your municipality. This is a map that looks purely at land surface temperature as a proxy for heat, right? So you have satellites that fly over, they're capturing temperature records, these temperature records are from July of 2022, a moment in time, actually, a couple of dates in July 2022, because we had to deal with cloud cover, but you see a sense of where our sort of surfaces are reflecting back, have a higher reflectivity that's keeping our communities very hot. We actually use this as a foundation for grant application to the Environmental Protection Agency, which we recently won, heard was awarded to us, in order to help drive some deployment of more, not only temperature sensors, but air quality sensors into our most vulnerable heat communities. And I do want to flag that both Sustainable Jersey and Rutgers have developed tools that take that foundation of land surface temperature and overlay it with key information, vulnerable populations, and in both cases, the tools sort of serve slightly different purposes depending on what it is that you're looking for. In the case of Sustainable Jersey, they're comparing at the county scale, in the case of Rutgers, you can sort of dive deep into, I believe it's Census Track, Census Block Group, excuse me, and figure out what's driving the vulnerability to heat in that Census Block Group. Is it that you have a really large number of elders in the community? You know, is it that the exposure to heat is so high? Just sort of putting it out there, there are some tools that folks can spend some time with if they'd like. Now, I'm going to transition into a conversation about our regional plan, regional planning program, Resilient New Jersey, Resilient NJ, and flagging that you have some handouts about this as well. So there are two sets of handouts regarding Resilient NJ. One is this stapled set of pages, which are one-page summaries of the four regional plans, where you can sort of see a little bit about what each of these regions has included in their plan, and then one that summarizes a toolkit that we've developed, where anyone, anywhere, regardless of whether or not you got the funding from DEP to do this regional plan, you can use the tools that are compiled into this toolkit to help to advance resilience planning in your community. So what I want to share here is that obviously, state action is critical, but many of you may have heard the adage, "All adaptation is local," right? Ultimately, the experiences are faced on the ground, and the interventions are happening at the ground scale, with state agencies doing our best to sort of help to advance that work, through technical assistance, through training, through, you know, provision of data and science, et cetera. So the Office of Climate Resilience runs this Resilient NJ program as a comprehensive technical assistance program that supports the local and the regional folks when they're doing their activities. We've got our planning program, which is four regions, sort of large-scale soup to nuts. We've got the municipal assistance program, which is, it sort of builds on the regional work, but gets into the detail with specific municipalities, and then we've got the tools And again, you have handouts for these, so I don't, I won't go into, you know, a huge amount of detail on these folks, but these are the four regional planning projects, three of which are in your region. So with the exception of the Atlantic County Coastal Region, every other series of municipalities and the plans that they produce are within the NPOs operating. When we're talking about regional planning, this is essentially, you know, we all sort of know what it takes to plan, we are driving towards implementing these actions. So the grants that were available to communities that applied back in, I think it was 2018, 2019, the project planning started in 2020, those plants, a third of them, a third of the budget was set aside for implementation of activity. And so when you dive in, you see how they use some of the planning grant dollars in order to sort of roll up your sleeves and just start. We actually were able to secure additional funding, which came through those, to those communities to continue the work. It was really deeply based on community engagement and sort of understanding the needs on the ground, as well as, you know, risk assessments, that we're using the best available science that we had. So here we have a look out to 2070, these particular plans are looking out to a 2070 sea level rise, increased precipitation scenario, and putting some numbers to what it would look like if we had a Sandy, another Sandy event in 2070. Where our, you know, estimates just for these four regions alone, is that a Sandy-like event in 2070 could cause as much as $45 billion in damages. And by comparison, the entire state of New Jersey had $30 billion in damage coming as well. So the plan is developed around this idea of sort of creating scenarios that pull together various types of actions, actions that will sit in the space of sort of physical interventions, policy interventions, as well as sort of social programs. And because you guys have these handouts, I won't sort of sit in each of these slides for very long, but just naming that, you know, we've already seen some really great successes come out of these regional plans, including, you know, a perfect batting average for the Northeast region, application to FEMA, Building Resilient Infrastructure Communities Grant Programs, where we've seen 21 million for implementation projects come to Hoboken, Jersey City, Newark, and Bayonne. We've seen sort of a deepening of partnerships in the Raritan River Bay community, where there's an extensive risk communication program that is engaging a variety of folks that might not have been engaged otherwise, and using that information to go straight into resilience redevelopment efforts. At an LBI, you know, this is a community where the planning has to happen regionally, right? If one community does something, the next community doesn't, that's not building resilience. The shore community is there, with a concept plan being the, sort of, one of the main keystone takeaway projects from this, and I'll skip Atlantic County, since it's outside of your region. So what's next for us is a continuation of funding, right? Those four regions were able to secure additional fundings that came to us, to us, from HUD's Community Development Black Program, block grant program for disasters, as well as additional funding that's coming to the coastal management program to help more communities go through a really intentional, risk-centered vulnerability assessment. As I mentioned, we have the municipal assistance program that started with five and are now expanding to 14 additional communities, right, sort of as we speak, as well as a variety of programs offered by organizations. I wanted to flag this, folks are probably familiar here again, that we have a new amendment to the municipal land use law that requires climate change-related hazard vulnerability assessments, CCR, HBAs, for folks that are using that acronym, incorporated into any new elements in a master plan. And our, you know, our team's funding, whenever we're contracting with technical assistance providers to do this, we're being really intentional to ensure that there's sort of an ability to use the outcomes of the regional NJ efforts in the master plan. You have a copy of the Toolkit's brochure, so just flagging all of the information that's available online, starting with understanding vulnerability, going through how best to sort of apply that work on the ground. And now I'll pivot for just the last few minutes, and I'm sorry that I've gone for longer than I intended, about the Blue Acres program. I believe some postcards made it around, folks. We have plenty of these, you can go to the booth and get a bunch more if you're going to go to the league tomorrow, but definitely share this information for our voluntary flood acquisition program. Since Sandy, we have had about 800 homes totaling $203 million flood protection. So this is helping those homeowners, those individual property owners, sort of secure new homes, because it is a program that not only are we purchasing the flood-impacted home from a disaster, but we're helping folks to sort of transition to higher ground, to safer areas. And now, what we call Blue Acres 3.0 is transitioning us even further into a really intentional municipal-scale resilience planning. So if you get a few municipalities together, you can create a sort of flood, stormwater flood park, or, you know, really intentional in one area to lessen the scale of the problem. So moving forward, whereas before we were fully responsive and only getting our funding from, you know, federally declared disasters, our intention into the future is that we can talk about disaster recovery, as well as preparedness for the next disaster, disaster, and think in clusters, in order to be able to, you know, do that, that planning that allows us to build resilience. And then, and I just wanted to show folks a few sort of images of the various risk communication campaigns. I think when we're in leadership positions and able to sort of drive planning interventions, you are often doing that in a way that's highly technical, often highly bureaucratic, and often hard for just your sort of regular, everyday person to understand. And so we've got a number of campaigns that are focused on moving from hard data to a sort of more understand, like an everyday understanding. So our community-based art program has funded a number of nonprofit organizations and artists to sort of drive home what it is that we're talking about. And these are just some images from, you know, various programs. And then we also have a social media campaign that focuses not only on tides, but sunny day flooding. And here, we're inviting people to use an app and to use various stations located in state parks to take a photo of the changing shoreline. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you so much. (applause) Open to any questions that folks may have.
Thank you very much, Natalie. Yeah, do any members of the board have questions for our speaker?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Thank you for that presentation. I'm actually referencing the scientific report on climate change, and a lot of the different stats, they say based on either a low, moderate, or high emission scenario. So I don't know, you know, what does that mean, and what's the benchmark? And kind of as a follow-up, in the same brochure, by 2050, there's a 50% chance this sea level rise will meet or exceed 1.4 feet. I'm not sure if I'm interpreting the 50% properly. Does that mean there's a 50% chance it doesn't?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's 50/50?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, and we use most of our planning, so to start with the first question, because one piece guides the other, right? Global emissions at the scale of the International Panel on Climate Change has different sense of the likelihood that the Antarctic ice sheet will melt, that, you know, there's a number of factors that go into what's considered low emissions, moderate emissions, high emissions scenarios, right? So if we keep business as usual through the end of the century, it'll be much more sea level rise, much more planetary warming compared to, you know, a number of the national plans coming into effect. So low, moderate, high, the first of that sort of crystal ball gazing into how much more carbon we're going to be putting into the atmosphere, and for the most part, we go with the moderate emission scenario for the purposes of planning here in New Jersey. So whenever you see those numbers, they're based on the moderate emission scenario. And actually, let me pivot back here to the chart, because the reason the scientific and technical advisory panel provided the details on this chart is so that local decision-makers can choose, are you looking out to 2030, 2050, 2070, 2100, or 2150? Which most people do not even think about 2150, there's just too many unknown variables. And based on that, what range of likelihood are you spending time in? We are, for the most part, advising that people spend time in the 17, 80, sorry, in the more than a 17% chance that this will happen by 2030. And then your second question about the 1.4 feet?
No, that was, I mean, it says 50% chance, so that would mean it's 50/50 that the rise would be the
That's right.
1.4 feet.
Yeah. In some ways, an easier way to think about it, and this is usually where mine minds goes, is that we will get to 1, 3, or 5 feet at some point in the future, right, 2030, 2040, 2050, whatever that decade is, but we're planning for that degree of flooding on the ground, and being sort of more or less conservative or risk averse in the way we do it. Not sure if that's helpful.
Yes, I think so. Thank you.
Of course.
Yes. So on the Blue Acres, you said that about 800 have been bought up, the Blue Acres. I think when I was on the council in Woodbridge, where I represented, probably a quarter of those homes were bought in my ward after Sandy. And it is a great program, especially for prolonged flooding problems, but have they found a permanent funding source, the Blue Acres? I know we were very lucky that president and the governor at the time got together and we were able to get those funds, but do we have a permanent source?
Not, not permanent, no. Not at the scale that is needed, or the sort of scale of the problem that New Jersey faces. So across the country, pretty much every state that is doing voluntary buyouts of this kind, almost every state, with the exception of a handful here on the East Coast, I know Florida has a dedicated program, there's a few states, they are waiting for disasters to occur, for then the monies to be implemented to be able to advance this, and the bits of money that New Jersey has are supplementary to the federal funding. And so that's actually a really big gap for us, ensuring that there is a more permanent, you know, pocket of funds that is constantly stood up.
Because I know before Sandy, there was no funding, that's why I was asking if they were giving permanent.
So there's some, I know, I believe there was some, again, smaller pockets that aside for fiscal years at a time, but that's not, you know, that's not regular for, for fiscal years at a time, but that's not, you know, that's not regular recurring.
And the other thing is, I know we're doing the Resiliency Program, Middlesex, you had it up there, Raritan, Bay, Raritan River, so thank you very much. Program that'll not just help with the flooding, but also bring some green acres and, and some walkable passive areas for the residents in our county. So thank you.
Of course, thank you for saying that. And I will say that we'll have another opportunity, another round of the regional program, so keep your eyes open. If you're not on our distribution list, join our distribution list. You probably are on local government assistance, you know, DEP's weekly update that goes out to local governments, you probably get those updates and all of that information is communicated there, but you're more than welcome to sort of join our distribution list. You're among the first folks that know when that opportunity is available.
Yes, I wonder if your predictions include possible work done by the Army Corps of Engineers, because they are looking into some possible projects, you know, about the big one for New, mostly for New York, but it also would affect New Jersey. And, and I think a number of areas are, are considering special flood projects. So are these part of the whole big picture?
Yeah. And there's another big Army Corps project down Delaware River as well, which is, again, outside of your guys' region, but with these, the big funded regional resilient NJ programs, we have the capacity to supplement the available modeling with locally available information. If you're just using the toolkit online, you're obviously not able to necessarily do that, but, but certainly every single time, not only those big Army Corps projects, but even, you know, long-term control plans and, you know, any number of commitments that local municipalities have to do capital improvements that incorporate resilience. Those are all being factored into the resilience action plans that come out of those regions. Of course.
Great, thank you very much, Natalie. It was very interesting.
Thank you.
So moving on to committee reports, I'll now call on Commissioner Charles Kenny, who will give the Planning and Economic Development Committee report.
Great, caught me off guard. We'll use it a little bit later. So, thank you, and I'm pleased to report the activities on the Planning and Economic Development Committee. At the October 16 joint meeting, we considered two action items. The first is the adoption of the NJTPA specific roadway safety performance measure targets for 2024. Following the practice started last year, we have chosen to set targets specific to our regions that are in keeping with the long-term goal of eliminating facilities, fatalities, and serious injuries by 2050. The safety targets encompass five performance measures, including fatalities, fatalities per 100 million vehicle miles traveled, serious injuries, serious injuries rate, and non-motorized fatalities and serious injuries. The region's progress on these measures varies. Fatalities are on track for a 16% reduction from 2022, exceeding the 4% annual reduction needed to reach zero by 2050. Serious injuries are down by about 3%, but as the chair noted, fatalities and serious injuries for pedestrians, bicyclists, and other non-motorized travelers have increased by 12% from 2022. This is of great concern. To address that increase and meet other targets, as the chair said, NJTPA works with subregions and partners on various programs and initiatives to improve road safety, including the Local Safety Highway Risk Rural Roads Program, Streets Smart New Jersey, Road Safety Audits, Complete Streets Technical Assistance, and more. Approval of the safety targets is listed as action item number one on today's agenda. Action item number two is endorsed by the NJDOT, Adjusted 2020 Urban Area Boundaries. The urban area boundaries are updated every 10 years following the decennial census and are the first step in updating roadway functional classifications. State Departments of Transportation, in collaboration with the metropolitan planning organizations, can adjust urban boundaries to smooth them out based on physical features like roads and rivers or municipal or county boundaries. NJDOT issued draft boundaries in June, NJTPA and subregional staff reviewed them and provided comments. NJDOT responded to the comments, and all but two comments resulted in changes to the region's urban boundaries. We thank all those involved in the update process. And then finally, staff provided an update on the Fiscal 2025 Unified Planning Work Program, which guides the planning work of the central staff, subregions, and transportation management associations. As Dave mentioned, input is being sought on new initiatives and priorities leading up to the board adoption at our March 2024 meeting. Before I conclude my report, I just want to say thank you to the NJTPA, working with the staff at Middlesex County, the Planning Department, and the state for their Southern Middlesex Regional Freight Movement Study. Thank you very much, and that's all I have, Chairman.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner. So that brings us to the PEDC action items. As you heard, we have two action items from this committee on today's agenda. The first is adoption of the NJTPA-specific roadway safety performance measure targets for 2024. I have a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion, Sussex County.
And may I have a second?
Second, Middlesex.
Good. Any comments from the board members?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. You know, I think the, you know, as a, as a region, we should all be greatly concerned about the injury rates that we're seeing in our region. Of course, across New Jersey and across the country, the rates of fatal crashes and, and crashes that result in serious injury have been rising, but it is disturbing that, you know, the, the serious injury rate for our region and the number of non-motorized fatalities and serious injuries are rising extremely high since the pandemic. And we all in this room and in this region have to just agree to accept that that is unacceptable. Not only is it of great concern that we need to take, you know, transformative steps to improve the safety in our roadways, and I applaud the board, the central staff, on, on working on setting safety targets, and I think that the actions that the staff is going to be undertaking are crucial to really drive down the, the rates and the, and the crashes that we've seen. But my concern is that we are, you know, as a, as a, as a region, going to be setting a one-year target, and a lot of the work that we're doing is, is a lot of long-range planning, which is understood, and it's understood why we're setting this target, as it is a requirement from the FHWA. But I, I think what we should all think a little bit about, you know, how we are going to be able to take actions to, to meet that target we're setting.
Any other comments from board members?
And I absolutely agree. It always frustrates me that the, the numbers are as high as they are as we're calling them targets, but I also think as a region, we've got some great models. Jersey City achieved Vision Zero last year. The city of Passaic had no pedestrian fatalities for the last two years. So we've got models within our region that we can all aspire to, and, you know, to your point, trying to drive those numbers lower than the targets as we're setting them. Any comments from members of the public on this action?
Okay, Beverly, would you please call the role?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
All right, thank you. Next is endorsement of the New Jersey Department of Transportation, adjusted 2020 urban area boundaries. I have a motion to approve this resolution.
Who moved? Ocean County.
May I have a second?
Second, Somerset.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments from the board members on this action item? Any comments from members of the public on this action item? Okay, hearing none. Beverly, would you call the role on action item number two?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
All right, now we will hear from Commissioner Jack Kelly to give the Project Prioritization Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am pleased to report on the activities of the Project Prioritization Committee. The committee did not consider any action items at the October joint meeting. However, we did hear a presentation from central staff on electric vehicle or EV adoption in the state and region. Among the key points, as of June 2023, there were 128,000 plug-in electric vehicles in New Jersey and almost 100,000 within the NJTPA's 13-county region. As the most populous counties, Bergen and Middlesex have the most EVs. However, Somerset County has the highest percentage, approximately 3% of all vehicles. Statewide, in the first six months of the year, EV registrations increased by a record 36%, and sales continue to grow rapidly, making up 13% of all purchases. Still, much more progress is needed to meet the state's goal of 330,000 EVs in the region by 2035. To make that possible, charging stations must expand. Staff have prepared an interactive map that shows existing charging stations in the region and EV corridors. That and more information is available on the NJTPA EV Resources website. The committee was also briefed about a new Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, or IIJA, funding opportunity. The Thriving Communities Program offers technical assistance rather than direct funding. It aims to support communities in planning and capacity building, particularly targeting areas with high pollution levels, poor air quality, persistent poverty, or historical disadvantages. While the deadline for this program is in two days on November 15th, as with most other IIJA programs, there will be future rounds of grants before the funding expires into the fall of 2026. Subregions should consider this and other opportunities. You can find more information on the NJTPA's IIJA webpage. Also, at the meeting, we were informed that the Gateway Development Commission approved its first construction contract for the Hudson River Tunnel Project, our region's highest priority transit investment. The contract is for a Tunnell Avenue overpass above the tunnel portal in North Bergen. Federal funds will cover $25 million of the estimated $28.6 million contract cost. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the report of the Project Prioritization Committee.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I'm glad you pointed out that there are future funding rounds with those EV chargers, because I know that today is the deadline, and we may have some of our municipalities and subregions trying to hit that deadline, but there will be more and further funding availability in the, in the future. That brings us to the Freight Initiatives Committee, and I'll ask Commissioner Jason Sarnoski to deliver the committee report.
Thank you, Chairman Bartlet, and I apologize for being a few minutes late, but I am impressed by you already being at action item E five minutes into the meeting. You are sorely going to be missed as chair. That was, that was excellent. So I'm pleased to report on the October 16 meeting of the Freight Initiatives Committee, which featured updates which are near and dear to my heart on truck traffic, truck staging, and parking at industrial properties. Our first speaker, Brian Height, from the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, right across the river from Warren County, spoke about the challenges associated with large-scale freight-related developments in eastern Pennsylvania. More than 30 million square feet of warehouse and logistics facilities have been developed in the past seven years, and many more projects are proposed. The Planning Commission assists its municipalities in developing and applying local regulations consistent with freight as a good neighbor practices. This includes encouraging developers to include onsite truck parking and amenities for the well-being of truck drivers to improve efficiency of their operations at their facilities. Next, the next speaker was Ben Spinelli, Executive Director of the New Jersey Highlands Council. He noted that the environmentally sensitive Highlands Region encompasses 88 municipalities across seven counties in New Jersey, especially in Warren County. He said freight-related challenges arise due to three major interstate highways crossing the Highlands, Route 80, Route 78, and Route 287. Given the public's concern about warehouse development, the Highlands Council acts to balance development with resource protection by providing municipalities and state agencies with guidance on land use evaluation and local regulations. The final speaker, Andrew Lappett, from Middlesex County Office of Planning, presented an overview of the recently completed Southern Middlesex County Freight Movement Study, an initiative funded by the NJTPA, which Dave spoke about earlier in his report. Recommendations from the study covered truck movement and parking, wayfinding, neighborhood protection, workplace access, and reconfiguration of some infrastructure. Also at the meeting, the committee heard that the NJDOT's Office of Freight Planning is in the final stages of drafting their scope of work for a truck parking study, and that the Port Authority has recently tested an aquatic drone that has application for underwater inspections. Central staff noted the completion of the Delaware and Raritan River Railroad FNS connection in the ocean in Monmouth Counties. The reactivated freight rail line completed through a public-private partnership removes freight trains from the North, North Jersey coastline and includes six improved grade crossings. That concludes the Freight Initiatives Committee report. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. That brings us to the public participation, the general public participation section of the meeting. As a reminder, we advise members of the public that we have a three-minute time limit on comments. The light on the timer will go from green to yellow when there are 30 seconds remaining, and then red, three minutes is reached. We ask that you keep your comments within the allotted time. We remind you that we are being webcast and that your comments become part of the public record. And we will start with members of the public who are here in the room and have signed up to speak, and we'll call on those who signed up via Zoom. Who do we have that signed up here in the room?
Mr. Chairman, no one present here today signed up, please.
Okay. In that case, Mark, would you please call on anyone who signed up for public comments remotely?
We have one person who signed up for remote comments, Mr. Andy Weiss.
Great. Andy, go ahead.
Morning, NJTPA. We desperately, good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll be quick, pretty quick. We desperately need bus priority in Hudson County. We also need NJ Transit bus lanes on Kennedy Boulevard in Hudson County. My NJ Transit buses travel an embarrassing 8 to 10 miles per hour using Kennedy Boulevard and Bergen Line Avenue. Cars quickly pass my NJ Transit buses because we are traveling so slow and the right lane is not fair. It's very difficult to live in Hudson County as an NJ Transit rider and pedestrian. We also need the NJ Transit Hudson-Bergen Light Rail extended to Bergen County. We have been waiting for 25 years. That's very important. We need more NJ Transit 88 and 154 bus service on Kennedy Boulevard. Coach USA runs the 88 bus line on Kennedy Boulevard, and they give us awful service. The NJ Transit bus line privatization scheme has been a massive failure because the private bus operators are going bankrupt and give terrible service. Private bus operators rely on profit, and that encourages them to run fewer buses. We are still waiting for our NJ Transit customer advocate for the last three years, even though the position is mandated by law. Hudson County Executive Craig Guy, please help NJ Transit riders and pedestrians in Hudson County. Please help us, Craig. Where is our Vision Zero team in Hudson County? Craig, we have been ignored for many years, and we need your urgent attention to NJ Transit riders and pedestrian safety in Hudson County. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mark, that was just the one person that had signed up remotely? Okay, great, well, I will just open the, the floor before we move on. Anybody in the room that didn't sign up but wants to have a go at the microphone? No? Okay, well, you had your chance. Thank you very much. That concludes the public participation part of the meeting. Before we wrap up, David wanted to make a few further remarks.
Just, just real quick, thank you very much. For those of you who attended our committee meeting last month, this won't be news, but for those of you who didn't, I just want to take this opportunity to recognize and thank Andy Swords from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for all of his years with the department. the department, and in particular, serving as an alternate on this board and working with us day-to-day on all sorts of issues and helping us get our work done, just being a good, strong partner to work with at the state. We really appreciate everything he's done. In case you haven't figured it out by now, Andy is retiring. This will be, I believe, at the end of this month, and so this will be his last board meeting with the NJTPA. This is, hopefully, I'm at two board meetings in a row with this sort of a commentary. Hopefully, hopefully, we'll break that streak next month and going forward. So, you know, we look forward to working with Eric Powers and others at NJDOT going forward, but I did just want to take this opportunity on behalf of the staff, past and present, and board members past and present, to say thanks, thanks, Andy, for everything you've done for us over the years, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, David. I thank you all. I really appreciate having had the opportunity. Every time I've come to one of these meetings, I've learned something new, and I've had some good teachers at NJDOT, so much appreciated, and thank you again, and I know this group will be doing some wonderful work moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the time and place of our next meeting is right here, but not till next year, January 8, 2024, at 10:30 a.m. Join us in this space for a new board meeting and a new board leadership for the two years that we have lying ahead of us. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
And a second?
Second.
Got that, Beverly?
Jersey City, second.
Middlesex and, uh, whoever. You know what? I think just put anybody down.
When we get it done, that's all.
All in favor, get out of here.
Hi.
Hi.
All right.